Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Blanco.
Here.
Commissioner Lopez.
Here.
Commissioner Dickerson.
Here.
Commissioner Mohajer, absent, and Chair Severt.
Here. Thank you. Have we all had a chance to look at the minutes and do we have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes from the October 16, 2024 meeting.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. This time, we're going to go to the public comment period, and each member of the audience may address the commission on any subject within the commission's business that is not on the agenda. Each member of the audience and each subject is limited to the discussion of three minutes or as otherwise directed by the chair. I don't see anyone wanting to speak. We'll go ahead and get started on the public hearings. We're going to keep the present 5A. We were thinking about... No, we're going to 5B, right? We want to go to 5B. So, we're going to do Belcrest first. We're going to switch the agenda around a little bit. So, tonight, we're going to look at Belcrest General Plan Land Use Map Amendment and Zone Change, Tentative Track Map and Plan Development Permit at 1571 East Main Street. Staff, can we have a report, please?
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission, members of the public. My name is Carol Dizinhenny. I'm presenting the project at 1571 East Main Street for Belcrest senior residences. The project includes a general plan.
I'm sorry, Carol. Our screens are not working.
I'm sorry. I thought they'd pop on once you started doing your presentation. There we go. All right. Turn mine on, too, then. This looks good. Yep. Thank you. Thank you, Carol, and Kathleen.
I think we're up and running.
I've got a computer.
Okay. I think we're ready to get started.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, the proposed project includes a general plan, land use, and zoning map amendment, a tentative tract map, and a plan development permit to allow the creation of 146 medium-density zoned lots for 142 single-family residences that are deed restricted for seniors. This project was presented most recently at the October 3, 2024 Planning Commission Study Session, and all actions tonight will be recommendations to City Council. The project site is located north of East Main Street. The site is 14.3 acres, 4.3 acres, and is developed with one single-family house, orchards, and a tennis court. Jonathan Place is to the west. Rowland Drive is to the north, and Navarro Way is to the east. Catty Corner to the northeast is Pioneer Valley High School, and agricultural land is to the south in unincorporated San Barbara County. So, the city boundary and county line is just on the other side of Main Street. Approximately a third of a mile to the west is the Marion Regional Medical Center. The project site is surrounded on three sides with single-family residential development and on the southeast corner, medium-density residential development for the La Ventana Town Homes. The current general plan designation of lower-density residential with a maximum density of four units per acre and a zoning designation of plan development permit or plan development single-family residential maximum or minimum lot size 8,000 square feet. So, the first item for your commission's consideration is a proposed general plan, land use designation amendment and a rezone to change the property zoning to medium-density residential, which would allow up to four units per acre. This proposed designation connects with the existing medium-density residential zoning district, as previously mentioned in the previous slide, and it would be the same zoning as the La Ventana Town Homes. So, this would be a continuation of the R2 zoning. So, this is the overall site layout. The project is proposing reduced lot sizes, and those are subject to City Council approval through the tentative map process. The proposed general plan amendment and zone change to R2 would allow for 12 units per acre. This project is proposing 9.3 dwelling units per acre, which is less than the R2 zoning would allow maximum. However, this isn't a traditional R2 development. A new configuration of the residential with small lot sizes and smaller home products, which are designed for seniors. The overall lot size ranges between 2,000 and 3,000 square feet, whereas the R2 standard is a requirement of 6,000 square feet minimum with a 60-foot width. These lots are between 50 to 40 and 50 feet in width. So, to approve the reduced lot size, City Council must make a determination. Reduction in the setbacks, all setbacks are being reduced with this request, would be a request for modifications through the plan development permit process with findings for a superior design by the project. So, on the north-hand side, just this project is divided up into two different housing types. The first one is detached, single-family residential, and then the other one is kind of a duplex-style housing type. So, the larger lots are actually the duplexes, and then the smaller lots are the detached These are the proposed setback modifications. So, on the top of the screen is showing the R2 standard, which is standard for all R2 zones, and on the right-hand side is a proposed modifications. So, the reductions are to reduce the front yard setbacks to five feet. Some lots have nine-foot setbacks. The rear setback from 10 feet to five feet. Side interior yards from five feet and 10 feet to three feet and five feet, and then five feet and 15 feet on the side corner. Again, the reduction in setback standards is subject to Planning Commission recommendation to City Council for approval, and the plan development permit findings that the project includes a superior design with elements that compensate for any potential impact of the proposed modifications on the surrounding area. This is the duplex style with the setback modifications. This is a zero-side yard setback style. The front setbacks are, it looks like this is 22 feet, but some of the garages are set back or set forward a little more, 9.5 feet. Rear yard setbacks would be reduced from 10 feet to eight feet, and then the side yard setbacks for the duplexes would be zero feet on one side, five feet on the other. Same on the corner lots. It should be noted that the driveways on all of these lots, except for the tandem spaces with one-car garages, there would be no room for parking in the driveways. It would be all in the garages. Due to the small lot sizes and configuration of the subdivision, the city's standard for corner visibility is not feasible with this project. The applicant is requesting a modification to the standard and has worked with Public Works Engineering to reduce, to use the Caltrans Design Manual instead. This is one of the exhibits showing all lots comply with that Caltrans standard. Modification is needed with the plan development permit to allow this change from the city standard. The city standard is shown here on the left. The project proposes numerous site circulation and accessibility features, which include narrow streets, 24 feet wide, with special paving, traffic calming features, and specialized lighting for safety of the residents and guests. As was referenced, discussed in the study session, sidewalks are shown in pink. The project also exceeds its minimum parking requirement by providing 363 parking spaces. Of those spaces, 79 are guest parking, which are designated throughout the site, and then each of the residences will have room for parking of two vehicles. No on-street parking is proposed with this project. So, here's an illustrative example of how the houses will be laid out for most of the northern portion of the project with the detached, single-family residences. These are the traditional small, one-bedroom floor plans with lots 50 and 52, which could feature a second bedroom or a den. On the top of the screen is showing the various housing styles together in a row, as you might see on a street. Also discussed at the Planning Commission Study Session was the layout and room for backyard features. This is an exhibit prepared by the applicant in response to the question about those spaces. So, shown on the screen are some examples of how these backyards might be used and what these yards could accommodate on these small lots. I would like to point out that each of these lots does include a front porch area, which would allow for the residents to sit and look out and make community with their neighbors. And I'm just going to run through a few of the floor plan examples and elevations. This is the smallest size with the one-car tandem garage. The average plant size is about 700 square feet, one-bedroom, 1.5 bath. This is Plan 2, which is a little larger. It's closer to 1,100 square feet with two bedrooms and two baths and a two-car garage. And then this is the duplex layout shown on the southern portion of the site. These are primarily two-bedroom floor plans, and they are on larger lots. This is a layout of some of the floor plans and elevations. Each of these plans does include some options for variation, including adding a fireplace, chimney, dormer windows, things like that, or bay windows, excuse me. There are six varied color schemes with optional roof tile substitution, shown on the bottom. And this is the overall planting plan and landscaping plan. The project is providing 30% landscape coverage. The requirement is 20%. This project is exceeding that requirement. Also included are 272 trees on the site. Here's some examples of the plant palette with the color and texture that would be planted throughout the site. The project is also providing a pool and deck area with the clubhouse, with gazebo amenity structures, as well as a pet-friendly pocket park. These are not required with a single-family development, but this is an amenity that the project applicant is providing for the senior residences here. This is an elevation of the clubhouse. Environmental review was completed for this project by, through a preparation of an initial study and mitigated negative declaration. It was circulated for 30 days from and through September through October. The city received four comment letters on the draft MND, and there was a response prepared for each of those letters, and no further environmental review is required for this So, with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission makes four actions this evening. First, by resolution, recommend that the City Council adopt a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program prepared for the project. Number two, by resolution, recommend that the City Council approve the general plan, land use map amendment and zone change, GPZ 2022-0003. And third, by resolution, recommend that the City Council approve the tentative tract map, tract 6040, and the project number TR 2022-0007. And by motion, finally, recommend that the City Council approve the planning commission, approve the plan development permit, PD 2022-0008. I would like to note here that the agenda and staff report did call for a resolution for number four. However, verbal motion is what's appropriate for this action. So, with that, that concludes my presentation. Staff is available for any questions, and the applicant is here with a brief presentation as well.
Thank you very much. Do you have any questions? Do we have an ex parte? I had a call from UPC. I talked to Brian a little bit about this project. Brian Schwartz. Does the applicant want to make a presentation?
I don't want to be redundant with the good presentation that Carol gave, so I'll try to be brief. Would like to make a quick, couple of quick introductions before I begin, first starting out with the applicant, Cam Boyd of CCB. There's also Ben Fine with CCB. We have our project engineer, Russ Garrison, as well as project architect, Eddie Hara. Just a little bit of background, and this is contained in your staff report. The first project that CCB designed for this project was 240 units. There was 153-story apartments and 90 of the duplexes. We had a lot of comments from the neighborhood and concerns about that project, mainly due to density, not enough parking, also spillover parking on the neighboring streets, cut-through traffic. Two-story duplexes and three-story apartments would be in contrast to the primarily one-story houses within the adjacent neighborhood. There was concerns that there would need to be more... There was concerns about visibility, so a request for furthering the setbacks from the structures was desired. We did go to a... Well, during this process, CCB was looking at a different product type, ways to address the applicant's concerns. They were constructing a project at Vintage Ranch in Orkut, and within that development, some of the units have ADUs, and they were receiving such great feedback on the ADUs that they came up with this concept for a very small lot, very small senior cottage, 100% senior product, and that's kind of the inspiration for this project. That unit there is about 580 square feet. So, the current proposed project lowers the density from what was previously approved by about 100 units, adds park, a real excessive, not excessive, but a good surplus of parking, over 200 units beyond what's required by code. All single-story, and setbacks from the adjacent residences range from about 35 feet to a little over 50 feet, and that's mainly due to the perimeter road throughout most of This was already in Carol's presentation, but this type of density typically requires more of an attached product, and this product is unique in the sense that a lot of people want an individual house, not sharing a common wall with their neighbors, and they also don't want a tremendous amount of yard space to have to take care of. So, this is an affordable-by-design concept for seniors, and thus the request for the different exceptions to the municipal code. There hasn't been a project proposed like this that we're aware of or built in in Santa This is another illustration that is similar to the previous one. We worked really closely with staff to outline what the streets would look like and the lots. It's hard to see from this exhibit, but it shows where the utilities would go, the trees to be planted, the bollards in the streets, and it was a really collaborative effort with staff to get to that point. With regards to the landscaping and trees, Carol mentioned it's 30% landscaping throughout the site. It exceeds the open space requirements. There is about 270 trees that will be planted throughout the project. And some of the amenities, she's already outlined, but a dog park and pocket park with a gazebo and fire pits and lounge area, and then on the right-hand side of that slide is pools and spas, cabanas, bocce ball courts, a 2,800-square-foot community center with gyms and kitchen, restroom facilities, meeting rooms. So, resort-style amenities and good gathering space and recreational amenities on-site. We also worked very closely with Planning and Public Works on the site circulation plan. Carol outlined some of the intersection treatment, pavement treatment at the intersections. We also worked very closely with Public Works to design the site distance triangles so that there's good visibility on those intersections. There's speed humps. There's good lighting there, and walkways around all the major roads, particularly from going from the pocket park all the way down to the clubhouse. There was a question at the study session by one of the commissioners regarding sidewalks on more the interior streets. If you look at the plan, even if you're located in the center of one of those streets, you would walk maybe past three of those small lots to get to the nearest sidewalk. That's maybe 150 feet. The speed limit is going to be posted at 15 miles per hour, and with a senior community, we think that this is going to be a very safe neighborhood for people to walk in. These are just some of the concept exhibits showing the entrance to the project. It's gated for security. It's got sidewalks, both sides out onto East Main Street. This is a depiction after you enter with showing some of the lighting, the walls with the pilasters, the clubhouse there, and that kind of on the left-hand side in the background. And this is the first intersection you would get to, and it shows the intersection treatments and the sidewalks and the crosswalks, the clubhouse and the architecture. This is a view with the pocket park in the background with the gazebo there. You can see some of the architecture on the buildings. So, in summary, this project provides a mix of housing types, especially in an area of town that really does not have much medium-density or high-density housing. East of the freeway, there's just a real lack of it, so it's providing for a different housing type and for a needed demographic. CCB did a really good job listening to the neighbors and trying to design a project that would fit in compatibly with that area and with those neighbors. Another thing that this project does is it is affordable by design, and if homeowners in a larger house want to downsize, it also opens up those larger houses for working families that want to get into a house because of the lack of inventory, just generally all It's close to medical facilities. It provides an amenity-rich, gated, secure, home ownership housing community, and finally, it respects the wishes of the Ibsen family to provide a senior housing project on this property. We've reviewed the staff report and the conditions of approval, and we agree with them, and we are available for any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Do we have questions? Commissioner Lopez, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brian, I just wanted to clarify on the plan development permit. I think it's item condition number 10. It says that residents won't be allowed to park in driveways that are longer than 18 feet?
That's correct.
So, you, on those shorter ones, you couldn't park sideways, right?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope. And that would be in the CCNRs?
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioners? Mr. Blanco? No questions. Thanks for working with us so hard on this, Brian. I know we've been to a couple of study sessions. We've asked for some modifications. The homeowners of the area came out. You guys have addressed a lot of their wishes. The first time this project came to us, they didn't like it, and you guys listened to that and monitored. And you guys listened to that and modified it accordingly. And I think we've had some pretty good communication with them, and I think they're much happier with this product. Again, when designing these projects, my pet peeve is having a place for a patio table and umbrella. It looked like the buildings in the front. Is that still a five foot behind those buildings, that flat area? Is that all we're getting is five foot in the backs?
The five foot is for a good portion of some of the smallest unit.
It seems like the unit's in the front. Can we go to the plot plan? So like the 41, 30, down to 36, 35? So behind those units, do they have an adequate space?
So I actually can't see the numbers from the screen, but each unit has at least an eight-foot-deep area for a patio table.
Every unit does?
Yes. Every... Carol, you're looking at the plan. Isn't the duplex units have eight feet? And then even the smallest cottage unit has a portion that's eight feet and then five feet for remainder of it.
Super important, so thank you for that. I thought we... I think this is... Louis? Speed bumps? I thought the fire department didn't allow speed bumps.
Chair, thank you for your question. Members of the commission, they... In this case, I believe fire did review and ultimately did approve their use, but I can absolutely confirm with Mr. Austin.
Yeah, I've been... In the past, when we've advocated for speed bumps, they said that it rocks the boat too much on the truck and swishes the water around, and they don't like it. So could you look into that?
Yeah, of course. One of our conditions that actually would be probably speed tables, which are vertical deflections that are not as pronounced. They have a shallower slope, so absolutely look into that.
Because, yeah, we want the fire department to have excellent access to this project. And...
Chair, I can answer that question.
Yes.
Condition number 66 for access roads prohibits speed bumps on emergency access roads. So if all of these are emergency access, there would be no speed bumps.
Okay, because the rendering showed speed bumps. So that's just something I caught on the pictures. So I don't know if those are allowed or not. We don't want to inhibit the fire department. So the units that you're asking for that are three foot and three foot, that's a six-foot in between the buildings. Generally, that requires an uptick in the fire protection. So it might be an architectural question. Are those now one-hour, two-hour firewalls in between those units? Are the windows any different? Are there no windows? What are we doing to protect the spread of the fires if there's a fire?
Good afternoon or evening. Yes, the fire protection is very much the same.
State your name and address, please.
My name is Eddie Hara. I'm the architect, 5569 Rosario Avenue.
Thank you.
In Tascado. Yes, the building's designed to meet the minimum requirements for approximately to proper line fire protection, so the three feet meets that. We are paying attention to projections, so we're limiting projections to less than 12 inches, and that's going to allow us to comply with a rated EVE, and we'll design to that as well.
So it is rated?
The EVES will be rated to meet that requirement, and the walls will be set a minimum of three feet from the PL. Where property... where walls are set closer than that, like in the duplexes, those walls will have a one-hour rating requirement.
Yeah, because normally, in the past, we've always had a five-foot setback. That was always a fire department requirement. So just so long as we keep those buildings safe. So generally, that rating, there's no EVANS, that type of thing, short projection.
Correct.
Stucco, tile, no wood.
We're limited to percentage of openings there, but we'll meet those what we're planning.
They have some new stuff out there for the EVANS, and they're fire-rated. Excellent. So speed bumps. I think that's about it for me. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. No other questions? At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open this up to the public. I do have one speaker slip here. And it's from Tom Emmerly. Would you like to speak? You have three minutes.
Yeah, I can speak from here.
Please, we need you at the podium with the microphone.
No, no problem. My name's Tom Emery. I live in that area.
Thank you.
I'm in favor of the project, but I am concerned. Currently, on Main Street, it's about two or three times a day. It takes you three revolutions of the light just to get up to the freeway. Adding this, not all seniors drive, I understand, and I'm a senior as well. So I'm just concerned about how... what we can do to mitigate the traffic a little bit. Is there any way we can resolve that a little bit?
Well, we have talked about that in the past, and because it's a senior project, the applicant was stating that the time zones on the people leaving and coming aren't the same as the schools in the area, like the... We've got Pioneer High School down there, and I believe that's the main traffic.
No, sir, it's not.
It's not?
No, sir. Hospital, the other businesses around there, change of shift at Marion, coming to the shift at Marion, add that, plus all the other things that go on, it gets to be rather much more difficult than just the school.
Yes. Louis, you have anything to add?
Chair, members of the commission, the traffic study did not identify any mitigation measures related to upgrading or reviewing the signal timing. What it did make a recommendation is to install a toy left-turn lane. But I can absolutely give you my card, and we could chat about it tomorrow if that would be okay with you.
That'd be fine. I can tell you that a lot of the residents that live near me, certain times of the day, we just go another direction because we know it's going to take forever to get up there.
Always willing to meet on-site and discuss.
And to be honest with you, that's what a lot of us are going to have to be doing in the future as the city grows. We have no ability to make the streets wider.
Sure, I understand.
So the fact that you're cognizant that you need to go the other direction, that's a huge help right there. Because I do the same thing. When I know that there's a street that is going to be impacted, I go a different direction. And I think we all need to start thinking along those terms a little bit as the city grows. When we have new developments, we can require that the streets are bigger, the traffic pattern is better. But we're kind of stuck with Main Street, the width that it is right now. And I do feel your concerns. It's... I've been down that street many times. My parents used to live on Concord, and that was years ago. And I know that the traffic has grown since then. So thank you for going the opposite direction. And I...
Thank you.
There's not a lot we can do with that.
I understand.
And please, give him a call, and maybe we can help you out in some other way.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other slips. I don't believe we have any rebuttals. Did you fill out a slip?
No.
I think you very much. Stacy Lamone, would you please state your name and address for the record? And then you have three minutes.
It's Stacy Lamone, and I live at 1683 Roland Drive. And I didn't see where you guys touched base on making the Spruce and Roland as emergency exit, entrance and exit. I've lived there 27 years, and it's an end of street. We went through having the high school built up, and I'm concerned of traffic and other usage with that gate. So is that still in effect for only emergency use only? No extra gate to the side to allow the seniors to walk through our neighborhoods? Because I know for us, when the high school was built, we voted not to have that opened.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if that's the same.
Go ahead and ask her questions, and then I can bring him back up.
I just don't know if that's the same view of opening the area.
I know we heard from residents. I don't remember seeing you before, but we did hear from the residents, and they didn't want parking on the other side.
Right, we didn't want the parking.
Right. And I think we've addressed that, but we can certainly ask the builder. But that has come up before, and I believe we have addressed that. Brian, can you address that, please?
I don't... The final design of the emergency gate has not been completed. So if there was a concern about pedestrians going into the other neighborhood and connecting to other sidewalks, we could just completely close that off.
I believe that's the trend. I know that that's... A lot of the neighbors, they don't want that parking on the other side. They don't want the traffic. They like their neighborhoods to stay as they are. And we've seen that before, and I would believe that that... Do we have any issues with that, putting a gate in there like that?
No, no, Chair, we do not.
Okay, so that shouldn't be an issue, and the applicant has no problem doing that?
And just to be clear, I was just referring to pedestrians, not vehicles. So it is an emergency access-only gate?
Yes.
For vehicles? And if the desire from the neighborhood is to keep pedestrians out of their neighborhood too, we can design it that way?
I believe that's the trend these days, Brian.
Okay.
Yes. So, thank you.
Chair, members of the commission, we can add that as a condition if the commission so chooses.
I believe it's necessary. Find out from the other commissioners, but I think that would be a good addition.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chair, would that... I'm sorry, Frank, would that... Where would that fall for one of us if we're making a motion or resolution? Which one... Where would we add that?
The commissioner may just simply state with the added condition requiring that the access point be closed to...
Which of the four do you want that in? The map, I guess? Yeah.
That would be the plan development permit, I believe.
Yes, that's fine. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't see any other slips or other questions. I'm going to go ahead and close this to the public. I'm going to bring it back to the commission for discussion and resolutions and motions. Who would like to go first? Robert?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Dickerson?
Chair, I really... I like this project. The applicant has come back to us several times. They've listened to the local residents. They've listened to issues. They've modified. I also think that it fulfills a need in that area and the city in general for housing for the elderly and the downsizing as well. You know, it's something Brian brought up that I've been thinking about for quite some time, and I like the idea of it, is that if you provide this sort of thing and people are downsizing in their city, that will hopefully free up a little bit of inventory for family dwellings and whatnot. So anyway, I just want to say I enjoy... I like this quite a bit, and I can certainly see voting for it. Thank you.
Commissioner? Commissioner Blanco?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I also agree with Commissioner Dickerson. I like the way the project has evolved since we've kind of been looking at it. The study sessions, I think, were very helpful. The pedestrian access was a concern of mine at the study session, but I actually have to review the site plans a little closer. I do appreciate the fact that the... There's a pedestrian... or, excuse me, a wheelchair ramp at each unit for the single-family units on the north side. I think that's a really good idea. That was my concern, was having wheelchair access to the street and to the walkways and to the clubhouse. So it looks like those ramps are going to accommodate that, which I think is a good idea. The... At the study session, I think I was concerned with the space around the units as well, similar to Chair Seifert. But now, kind of looking at things and realizing, I think it's probably a reasonable fit for seniors that don't really want a lot of maintenance of yard, so that makes a lot of sense. So I do appreciate that, and I think the design does look very nice. I can appreciate the architecture. Looks very... Like a very nice site plan. I like the treatments at the intersections and everything. It looks like it's going to be a very attractive project. So, yeah, I'm very pleased with the back and forth and the refinement of the site plan. I think it's been really good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, I was... One of the concerns I had was at the study session was, I think Commissioner Blanco brought it up, was the east-west or... Yeah, the east-west, no sidewalks on those east-west streets. And, yeah, I like it. I think it's... I looked at that, and I liked the layout. I remembered I lived in a PUD community like this. I like the architecture. I think the architecture does allow me to make the finding of a superior product to allow it to use those modified setbacks. Kind of cottage and cozy. Yeah, it's a nice little development, and I think I could support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I too... I like the work that you've done, working with us, working with the community. I think you've really worked hard to get this thing as a good fit. You know, I always... They say it's senior living and for elderly people. When I look in the mirror every day, I'm thinking that's pretty much me, so I could end up at one of these places. So the reason I want that backyard, and I don't want a lot of backyard, but I want that table back there, I want a place to sit. And so that's why I look at that so hard, is, you know, who knows? You get to one of these places, you've got your clubhouse, you've got your pool, you've got your stuff. You don't have to worry about any lawns or yards, and it increasingly is... Yes, exactly. So with that, thank you for your efforts on this, and I can totally see supporting this project. I think you've done a good job fitting it into our community. So with that, do we hear a resolution?
I can.
Commissioner Dickerson, thank you.
All right. We'll start off with, by resolution, recommend that the city council adopt a mitigated mitigative declaration and mitigation monitoring program prepared for the project.
Roll call?
Do we have a second?
We need a second, correct. Do we have one?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
And now a roll call.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Chair Seifert?
Aye.
And by resolution, we recommend that the city council approve the general plan land use map amendment and zone change, GP 2022-0003.
You left off a Z. I'm sure that's okay.
That's right. The whole thing falls apart now, the project and everything.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
And can we have a roll call, please?
Chair Dickerson?
Aye.
I forgive me. Commissioner Dickerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Chair Seifert?
Aye.
And by resolution, we recommend that the city council approve the tentative tract map, tract 6040 TR 2022-0007. And I guess...
Do we continue? Do we continue that?
Do we continue for...
Just on that. Okay, do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
And can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Dickerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Chair Seifert?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez just brought up the couple of letters. What should we... Should we bring... Were those mentioned, the letters that were sent to us?
They were not mentioned.
Chair Seifert, Commissioner Dickerson, yes. We received two written correspondence, both in support of the project, from, let's see, excuse me, from Dignity Health, the Vice President of Acute Care Services, and the Home Builders Association of the Central Coast.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to read into the record there.
This would be where we add the gate?
Yeah.
Thank you.
By motion, recommend that the city council approve the plan development permit PD 2022-0008 with the gate modification as discussed, security gate modification as discussed.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. You guys are good to go. Thank you very much. Looking forward to Not charging. Oh.
I just made sure that this was...
Okay, now the exciting next 5A. We've all been waiting for this. I believe Commissioner Lopez is recusing himself on this one?
Mr. Chairman, I'll be recusing myself for a conflict of interest, a financial conflict of interest, and I will recuse myself. And we do not have a study session tomorrow, correct?
But I believe there is a launch tonight.
Oh, nice.
Early, so might be worth seeing. I think it's a clear night.
Thank you, sir. I will...
We'll see if we don't.
I don't think we'll be here that long.
Yeah, I was just going to say. Have a good evening.
Okay, at this time, we're going to move to item 5A, the Santa Maria Public Airport District General Plan Amendment and Zone Change at 1494 Fairway Drive. Staff, can we have a presentation, please?
Yes. Thank you, Chair Seifert. Good evening. My name is Cody Graybell. I'm a senior planner with the city, and this proposal will be establishing industrial designations at 1494 Fairway Drive. And the project was presented to the public and the commission at study session on September 18th. So the project's located in the southern end of the city, and it's part of the Santa Maria Public Airport. It's right at the northern end of the public airport. And the project has been reviewed for consistency with the city's general plan, zoning code, and the airport land use compatibility plan. And there's been a mix of industrial, business park, row crops, and airport development that's occurred adjacent to the project site. The site is seven acres, and it's one vacant parcel. It's flat and contains no significant features except for a city water well, which is shown here. And the site was formerly used as part of a golf course and military barrack operations for the airport in the 1940s. Adjacent to the site are county flood control channels, which are here and extend across A Street, wrap around the sides of the project to the south as well. And to the north and to the east of the project site are various business park and industrial developments. And then to the south and west are open space areas adjacent to the airport runway. This is a perspective facing southwest on A Street, looking onto the project site. So the request is to amend the general plan land use map from airport service to light industrial and the zoning map from open space to plan development, light manufacturing. And to clarify, there is no plan development associated with this project tonight. However, the applicant has clarified that up to 100,000 square feet of industrial or manufacturing development would likely occur in the future if this project was approved, and that build-out would require a separate plan development permit that we'd bring back to the planning commission. So these are the changes to the general plan land use designation. On the left is the existing designation. On the right is the proposed light industrial designation. And staff has found that the designations do align well with the existing development and the existing designations, both to the north and east, which include light industrial as well as heavy commercial manufacturing. The zoning designations would change to PD M1, which would be plan development, light manufacturing. And staff has found that the zoning would be compatible with the surrounding area and that it would not introduce conflicts such as citing industrial next to residential, and that the proposal is consistent with the airport land use compatibility plan. So just a little background on that. The plan is regulated by the County Santa Barbara Association of Governments, or SB CAG, and the Airport Land Use Commission. They review proposals that are adjacent to the airport for compatibility with the airport itself, and the purpose is to protect the public health, safety, and welfare from excessive noise and safety hazards, and then essentially prevent the creation of new noise and safety conflicts between the airport and the surrounding land uses. So these are just a couple of exhibits from the compatibility plan. On the left is the safety zones, and the site is split between two zones, 3 and 6. And then on the right are the noise contours, and the project is outside of any noise contours of concern. Here's the land use matrix from the compatibility plan, and manufacturing is a conditionally compatible land use in safety zone 3. So that's highlighted just in this red circled area. And the conditions specifically are that the project would not exceed a maximum intensity of 150 people per acre, and lock coverage would not exceed 60% of the site. So based upon the conceptual 100,000-square-foot project, the project would comply with both of those conditions, and a future PD will carry these requirements over as conditions of approval. And lastly, on September 17th, pardon me, September 19th, the Airport Land Use Commission did determine that the project is consistent with the compatibility plan. So here's just some background on environmental review. Staff completed an initial study and mitigated negative declaration as required by the California Environmental Quality Act. There was multiple impacts that were identified but mitigated to less than significant in subject areas of air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, noise, and tribal cultural resources. One mitigation to point out was in the bio section, California Red-legged Frog Impact Avoidance. So that is part of the mitigation monitoring plan. And there also was a traffic study completed by Central Coast Transportation Consulting, and it determined there'd be no VMT impacts and that the study intersections operate at acceptable levels of service of D or better. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the following actions are taken. By resolution, recommend the city council adopt a resolution to adopt a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program prepared for the project. And by resolution, recommend the city council approve the general plan land use map amendment and zone change GPZ 2023-0001. And that concludes my presentation, and staff and the applicant team are available for questions.
Thank you, Cody. Do we have any expertise on this one? No, nor do I. Would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening, Chair Seifert and members of the commission. My name is Pam... Am I not on?
I can hear you.
Okay, I'll start over again.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner Seifert and members of the commission. My name is Pam Ritchie, and I'm a planner with our M Design Group, representing the Santa Maria Airport District for the rezoning request before you tonight. And the project team has had the opportunity to review the staff report and supports the recommendation to the city council for approval of the general plan amendment and rezoning. And as Cody pointed out in his presentation, the request to rezone the site from open space to manufacturing is consistent with the prevailing land use pattern in the area. And the potential build-out of the site of 100,000 square feet was made to be conservative and make sure that potential impacts of future projects were adequately evaluated in the initial study and MND. So in addition to myself, the airport manager, Martin Pell, and the airport board chairperson, Nash Moreno, are also in the audience. And since there is not a particular project that you're evaluating on the site tonight, you may not have any questions for us, but we're available if you do. And that concludes my presentation.
Thanks for being here. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Dickerson?
Yeah, and it probably is not going to make any difference one way or the other how we vote for them. I'm just kind of curious what the vision is for what you want to put there. I mean, is this things that the airport's going to use the space for, or are you going to rent the space out once you build something? Just kind of curious.
The intention is to eventually sell the property to someone to develop a project that's consistent with the zoning category.
I see.
So there's not any particular type of project that's in mind at this point.
I see. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Blanco, do you have anything? What happens to the well?
I'm sorry, what was your...
The well that's on the site, that's a city well.
Correct.
So I'm guessing that's city property?
Yeah, so that's about 4/10 of an acre, and it's close to A Street, and it'll remain wood development.
It just stays in purpose, stays there, working?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, because I drove by it today, so I saw it. It's just a little house out there.
Right.
Got a little power line going to it. Okay, so that stays?
That stays, yeah.
We're not losing any water to the city? Perfect. I don't really have any questions. I think we saw your study session, and we asked questions, and we looked at it, so I'm good. I don't see any more questions. So thank you very much. This time, I'm going to open this meeting up to the public. I have no written communications. We no longer do Zoom, and I don't see anyone in the audience wanting to fill out an application, so should be good to go. No more questions? Going to close the public hearing. I think that's the fastest one I ever had. Let's bring it back, and we can discuss it or have a resolution.
I don't really have a whole lot of comments. I'll defer to any other comments, but it seems like a very reasonable use of the land for the area and checks all the boxes for the compatibility with the different plans. So I don't see any concerns at the moment.
Commissioner Dickerson, anything?
I concur.
Yeah, that property is just sitting there. The site map, the sound zone still had the golf course on there. That hasn't been there in a long time. So I think it's time to do something with that property, and appropriately, you guys, I think you could figure out what to do with it. So I don't have any issues with it whatsoever. I think it's a good idea. So at this time, we've asked for a resolution. Who wants to do it?
Sure, I will. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Blanco, thank you.
So by resolution, recommend that the city council adopt a resolution to adopt a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program prepared for the project.
And do we have a second?
Second.
And a roll call, please.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Aye.
Chair Seifert?
Aye.
And also, by resolution, I recommend that the city council approve the general plan land use map amendment and zone change GPZ 2023-0001.
Do we have a second?
Aye.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Aye.
Chair Seifert?
Aye.
Guys, you're good to go. It's barely even 7:30. Guys, have a good night. Thank you. Good luck with your property. Do we have any oral reports from staff?
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. I would like to just go over the agenda. As was mentioned earlier, tomorrow's study session, November 7th, has been canceled. The next regularly scheduled date for a planning commission meeting would be November 20th. That meeting is also canceled. So we do have the next time the study... or, excuse me, the commission will be meeting is the study session on November 21st. And we have two items to discuss at that meeting. And then following that meeting, we have the scheduled meeting on December 4th for a planning commission hearing. My understanding is that November 21st meeting will be held at Shepherd Hall, which is the study session, and will be here again on the 4th, December 4th, for the...
You can remind us a little closer that we're not where we're meeting?
Correct.
Thank you.
We will do that.
Okay.
And that concludes staff's reports.
Perfect. Okay, commissioners, anything to add? We are adjourned. We are adjourned.